Good afternoon, good evening everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, and the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, would you please lead us in this evening's implication?
I will, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Most gracious, Heavenly Father, send down your blessings on this meeting of the City Commission and upon the individual members who comprise it. Give this commission member a clear sense of duty and lead them with the faithful discharge of the same. Direct them in their deliberations at this meeting so that all things may be done to the glory of thy name and the welfare of the people of Madeira Beach. Always in your name we pray, amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the provided minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I saw move.
A second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion, corrections? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Before I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, I'm going to ask if it pleases the commission if we could pull to discuss items under the consent agenda, item number one, item five, and item eight, and go ahead and move that to the top of new business on tonight's agenda for discussion and consideration.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to consider two under presentations. I'm wondering if the weather kept our presenter and presentation acceptor out of here, so maybe we can...
Just go out of order?
Yeah, let's see if they show up, and if not, we can just refer to the next meeting.
Also, if the commission would please consider, we'll just float the presentation till our guests arrive.
Fantastic.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written with the exceptions of the consent agenda one, five, and eight coming out for further discussion and floating the presentations.
Second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. All right, I guess that means first up would be public comment. Public comment, this section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this evening? All right, we're going to close public comment. Next, consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the consent agenda.
I saw move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion from staff? Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff on the consent agenda?
The ones that you just pulled up, did not pull out, no sir.
Okay. Is there any questions from the commission?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, unfinished business, ordinance 2014...
Mr. Mayor, the ones that you pulled up?
Actually, I put that under new business, so we'll be items one, five, and eight, we'll start under new business. They'll be the first thing we, under new business, so we're going to finish unfinished business first.
Understood.
All righty, next unfinished business, ordinance 2014-10. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014-10, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending Chapter 26 Elections, Section 26-3 Election Board to authorize the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections to conduct the municipal elections by providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, by providing for severability, and by providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2014-10 by title only, and it does require a public hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance 2014-10 be passed on second and final reading.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff?
No, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion or comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, ordinance 2014-11. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014-11, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida reaffirming the existing boundaries of said election districts within the City of Madeira Beach, Florida contain a balance of electors that does not exceed a 15 percent difference in any district by providing for repealing by title only, by providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and by providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance 2014-11 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that this commission pass ordinance 2014-11 on second reading.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. And is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comment from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, new business, the first item under new business. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the City Clerk employee evaluation and job description.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
You can second. I make the motion to approve the evaluation for the City Clerk.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
And actually, Tom, you have to, okay, yeah. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Tom, if I wanted to amend the motion, do I pass the gavel to the Vice Mayor to ask for the motion to be amended?
Yes, you have to pass the gavel. You cannot do that. And by the way, I think the motion was for employee evaluation, but you had also on your agenda the job description. I don't know if you wanted to include that in your motion, Commissioner Poe?
Give me.
Or if you wanted to address that separately. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, I make the motion to approve approval of City Clerk employee evaluation and job description.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
And, Madam Vice Mayor, at that time, I'd like to also have that motion amended to also consider giving the City Clerk a 3 percent raise on that motion with the, if it's accepted.
Absolutely. You want me to make it again?
No, it just, somebody needs a second mind.
Okay, I second yours.
Okay. Um, Madam, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you got to finish the whole thing now.
Oh, okay, so what we're doing here is going to go, we're going to approve the City Clerk's evaluation and job description, give him a 3 percent increase.
Now, if there's any discussion on the motion for the 3 percent increase?
I'm sorry?
If, now you can ask if there's any discussion on the 3 percent. That's okay, you're doing fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I threw you, I didn't even let you know that one was coming.
Is there any discussion on the 3 percent increase?
Yes, ma'am, Vice Mayor. Sorry, too much, go ahead.
You want to go?
Yeah. Amy, I just wanted to say, you've done an awesome job. You are a benefit to the city. You've exceeded the expectations that I thought you would do with this job, and you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I second that. Thank you.
My third that. I would also add, my darling, you've done a fantastic job this year, warning. What is it? It's not an easy job.
No.
You've spent hours, you've done a fantastic job, all the time, and you cannot believe how many minutes you've also given me last year. Way, way. So, I can't begin to tell you how sorry I am because I've been watching you.
Thank you.
The reason that we're talking about this, Amy, obviously you know that, is we can hire you, City Clerk, and of course with Tom and the City Manager, and what, three decades now with the City of Madeira Beach, with the Fire Department, and so that's a 1 percent for every decade you put in work. How bad, huh? I think we're getting our money's worth, is what I'm saying.
Gee, Terry, thank you.
1 percent for every decade that she works, but you're doing a fantastic job as a City Clerk, and I know it's a big, big jump, big, big step between going from, you know, back to up here. And you have caught us up on everything, and it seems to be working wonderfully, and I have to give kudos not only to you, but for the rest of the staff that you, that you work well together. And I think that's something that we may, in the future, bring up, that we might get the City Clerk's position within the boundaries of the City Manager. So it's something that we'll look at in the future, because I know you work well with the City Manager, and, you know, any City Manager hopefully that we'll have in the future. All right, so thank you again for your hard work, and I think I wrote it in, thank you again for your loyalty to Madeira Beach.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Amy, we're very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I thank you for the opportunity that you allowed me to be in this position in the first place, and I have learned a lot this year, and I had a lot of challenges, but we've gotten through them all, and I hope to continue to serve this commission and the citizens of Madeira Beach to the best of my ability with honesty and integrity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you.
Okay, Miss City Clerk, do you want to go ahead and call the roll, please?
I will do that. Again, we've got to do that part. Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick clarifying point for that, for the raise? Is there an effective date that the City Commission has in mind for that?
For the raise?
I think, to stay consistent...
Since we've already called the roll, do we need, does that, does another motion need to be made on that? If somebody wants to make it effective immediately, or effective in a week, or her anniversary date, or anything like that?
Well, if you didn't make a motion, it would be the next payroll period.
Okay.
Okay, if you wanted it retroactive to another date, then of course you would need to do a motion on that.
Okay.
So that is up, and it may, usually it's on an anniversary date.
Yeah, I mean, to stay consistent with how you handle me and her, I would suggest that it go back to your anniversary date of whatever that date is, but...
I think, well, I was put in it on October 30th, and I think they gave me, I have to, I have to look.
We should just make it effective her anniversary date, whatever that may be, when she was first approved as the City Clerk.
And once again, do I need to call for a motion, or is that just automatically falls?
Yes, you need a motion on that now.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to make active the City Clerk's 3 percent raise at her anniversary date.
I saw move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Commission? Is there any further discussion? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
And Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Fire Department grant acceptance.
I'll make, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion for the approval of the Fire Department's grant exception.
I second.
All right, motions have been made in second. Is there any comment from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to make you aware, this was a grant that was headed up by the Chief and the Fire Department. This gives us approximately $24,000 in assistance for, the grant was specifically for PT or fitness equipment, so that'll help out greatly in a very meager project budget for the fitness center here, and so kudos to the Chief for landing that, and just wanted to make you aware of it and have you accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Is there any further questions or discussion from the commission? Is there any further discussion from the audience? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
And Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Stormwater Fund Grant...
I make a motion that this commission pass the approval for the Stormwater Fund Grant Acceptance.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there, actually, before I ask for any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford, I've got to say that that's outstanding. I've seen a lot of cities do things, and hopefully you'll take a few seconds to kind of explain this, because I think there's a few people that are confused out there in this city, what this means and how this works for us, and how this will be, there's a, will be truly a five to seven-year plan under repaving of our roads and our stormwater system. But at this time, I'm actually going to ask if there's any comment from staff.
Sure. At the next workshop, I'll present a hard copied document that you can have that shows the road projects that we're going to do and how they're going to be paid for. This grant, and I see Wayne's in the audience, and he's got his pen ready, is for about $1.3 million, which is exceptional. And kudos to Dave and Vince, they worked hand in hand with me and Al Carrier, our contracted engineer, and Al is due a lot of the credit. He really did an exceptional job and landed this for us, and we have reason to believe that we'll be eligible for ones in the future, and so we're going to do everything that we can to utilize those grants. Basically, what this means, and we'll have to come up with a financing plan on how to do this, but you spend, it's a matching grant, so we have to spend $1.3 million to get $1.3 million. The project will be the Boca Seega area. It's in need of this repair, and the financing plan will be part of that document that we present to you at the workshop in two weeks. So, that being said, it's great news for Madeira Beach. It's $1.3 million that we don't have to tax or borrow to get an extraordinary part of Madeira Beach stormwater repaired, replaced, and new paving, new roads.
And, Mr. Crawford, I just want to add also to the staff, thank you very much, and to the Commissioners. I know that all the Commissioners had written a letter and taken the time to send emails out, and together, guys, this was done with everybody. So thank you very much to the Commission and staff for getting this done, because it is a large, it's a good number.
That's a big one.
It's a big number, so thank you. Commissioners, is there anything?
I, Mr. Mayor, I need to jump in here, too.
Okay.
This grant agreement just came to the city, and although it's on your agenda, it was put on just recently. I have not had the opportunity to review this, I just received it tonight, so I'm asking that you allow the City Attorney's Office to review it, so maybe the appropriate thing to do. I know there's a motion on the floor to approve it as is, but maybe the motion could be amended to approve it, subject to the City Attorney having the opportunity to review it. This is a big deal, I understand that, but it's also a big deal because of the fact that you're going to have to put out almost $3 million before you get the $1.3 million. So you have to put out all the money first before you get it back, and I want to make sure that there are no additional hoops that we need to jump through to get that money back, or any additional obligations that are not ordinary. So that's the only thing that I would ask before the Commission votes on that particular motion. I'd like the opportunity to review it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll amend my motion to include the City Attorney's approval.
I second.
All right, so the motion's been amended in the second, so is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any discussion from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir. Again, I know we have to spend the $1.3 million to get the $1.3 million, but we're going to do that anyway. We were going to spend 2.6, or 3.5, or whatever, but we're not spending this money just so we can get the 1.3. We're spending this money to increase the capacity for the stormwater and to make the city a better place to live, and we were going to spend the 1.3 anyway, and this just doubles everything. It's like getting a set of braces for the, for your younger brother when you buy one for your older brother, so it's really, it's a great deal, it's a good deal.
I'm going to get one free.
Yeah, there you go.
And the good thing, Commissioner, if you look at the whole program, and I'm sure, and I don't want to spread this out too long, but when the City Manager puts it together, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Crawford, is at the end of the line, we've gotten our money back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's all rolled through the whole cycle, as long as we hit cycles, though. You're absolutely right. It's like...
The idea would be, in this instance, you know, if it's a 2.6, let's call it a $2.4 million project, we'd borrow that, the entire thing, the money that we receipt back, then would be used on the next road project that we'll be able to show yet and how that goes down the line, so. It's not a sophisticated system by far, but it's simple enough, and like I said, when we can get those types of grant dollars for free, I can't go wrong.
No brainer.
And I got it on the first time, so if I can get it on the first time, anybody will get it.
Oh.
Is there any further, I'm sorry.
Fourth Mudd is a great group. It's fair and understanding. We had that same type of an idea that John...
Yes.
When we did the redevelopment of John's Pass, and it all worked out very well, so I'm so happy for it to happen to us with Shane in command, because it will be a big asset to this city. Let me touch it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, new business, public hearing, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, on this public hearing for the, for two COP liquor licenses at the Schooner Motel located at 14,500 Gulf Boulevard, Madeira Beach, Florida, this application for this alcohol beverage permit has been withdrawn. Just prior to the hearing, we received a written request from the property owner to withdraw that application, so there's no action that needs to take place on this particular item.
So I don't need a motion on that, we can just skip over and go straight to Resolution 2014-41?
That's right.
Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-41, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the FY 2015 general fund budget by increasing expenditures in the amount of $156,639.12, and authorizing expenditures in the amount of $156,639.12, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-41 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution 2014-41 be approved on first reading.
I second.
First and final reading.
Which was made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-42, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-42, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending FY 2014 Marina Fund Budget by increasing budgeted resale revenue and expenditures as related to ship store activity, and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2014-42 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I'll make the motion for Resolution 2014-42.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-43, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Did I get that? 42, 43.
Yep.
Sorry, I backpedaled one. Resolution 2014-43, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending FY 2014 budget by reducing capital outlay expenditures and amending the FY 2015 budget by increasing roll forward expenditures and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2014-43 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to pass Resolution 2014-43.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, bid approval for the bid award, it's a bid award for the Marina Electrical Improvements in the amount of $78,293. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a bid award for Marina Electrical Improvements in the amount of $78,293, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Dave, just real quick, I just have a question for you, is that, okay, if I ask?
Yeah.
Just, are you, is this the relay out for the docks, A-B docks?
This is, this is all the way from the transformer to B dock, which is, B Dock is the one that we're getting ready to rebuild completely with transient access and the lifts.
Okay.
This covers that section. We competitively bid this project several months ago, and really took a lot of staff time, and at the end of the day, the two bids were within about $800 of each other, so we got a really, really good number, and I think we're going to have a really nice product at the end of the day.
So this will allow us to move forward with putting in the extra lifts with this power?
Starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Dave, don't we have already a couple of these?
Yes, ma'am.
That's great.
Moving in the right direction.
We have lots of confidence about that.
We're getting there. Lot of work to do, though, lot more to do.
Is there, Mr. Crawford, is any further comments from staff?
You got it.
Cool. Is there any further comments? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-44, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-44, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the FY 2014 general fund budget by reducing revenues related to Gulf Boulevard improvements, and amending the FY 2015 general fund budget by increasing roll-forward revenues, and providing for an effective date, that was reading Resolution 2014-44 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that Resolution 2014-44 be passed on first and final reading. And I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, Mr. Mayor, the finance director can field any specific questions, but this is just rolling forward the, the company, money, doing what we need to do to make sure we can still access that, that's in simple terms.
All righty. Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-45, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-45, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the FY 2014 budget by increasing personnel expenditures in the amount of $202,009 for the previously authorized citywide employment and release agreement, and providing for an effective date, that was reading Resolution 2014-45 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution 2014-45.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Is there any further comments from the audience? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Ordinance 2014-12, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance 2014-12, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, updating Madeira Beach's comprehensive plan capital improvement element to adopt an addendum to the five-year schedule of capital improvements for 2014-15 through 2018-19, providing for, reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date. Again, that was the first reading of ordinance 2014-12 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance number 2014-12 on first reading, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I know that we've come over this five-year plan for years and years and years, and there's really no commitment for this, isn't it? We just, we just put this together for the, the state, or, or who, who do we put this together for, Mr. Crawford?
Let Lynn comment on it?
Good evening.
We, we put them down, but-
We are mandated by the Florida statutes to do this annually.
Yes.
It used to be every year, we had to amend our comprehensive plan capital improvement element, this ended in 2011 with the Community Planning Act, now we do it by addendum, so this reflects our capital improvement program and those items that relate to the level of service items in our comprehensive plan, like portable water, sanitary sewers, solid waste, and the like.
I guess my question is, are we locked into this for five years, Lynn? Can we change it next year, right?
Yes, every year, every year, it's all based upon our capital improvement program, and last night, the planning commission looked at this and recommended approval to be all.
And I, I'm fine with it, I approve it, but I'm just saying, I, I don't know why the state makes us do it, thank you.
But they do.
I understand. I, I, maybe I don't understand a lot.
Yeah, a lot of people need a job up in Tallahassee, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right.
Is there any further comments from the commission? Any further comments from the audience? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Uh, next ordinance 2014-13. At this time, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ordinance 2014-13, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on March 10, 2015, for the purposes of electing a commissioner for District 3 and a commissioner for District 4, providing for authorization for the city clerk to sign a contract with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County Canvassing Board as the canvassing board for the March 10, 2015 election, authorizing for a runoff election if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2014-13 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance 2014-13 be passed on first reading.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussions or questions from the commission? Madam City Clerk, do you have anything?
I do.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next ordinance 2014-14, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Okay, this is the last one I'm going to read for you tonight.
Okay. Let's go.
All right, ordinance 2014-14, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the city of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinance, is Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in general, Section 14-1, Display of Numbers Mandatory to Increase the Size of Numbers. Article 2, Technical Codes and Standards, Section 14-31, Fire Codes Adopted, to Reference the State of Florida. Section 14-32, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, to Adopt the Most Current Additions of the International Property Maintenance Code and the National Electrical Code. Article 5, Marine Structures, Division 1, generally, Section 14-161, Construction or Repair, Alterations or Raising to Conform to Provisions of Article, to Reference Seawall Caps. And Section 14-164, Structures Upon Dock Seawall Jetties and Groins, to Reference Seawall Caps, and Providing for an Effective Date, that was reading of ordinance 2014-14 by title only, and I noticed that groins is misspelled in there, so we need to correct that. Um, and that's not the right groins that we're referring to. So, uh, we'll, we'll catch that, and we'll bring it when we read it the second time.
Do you need that made in the motion?
Yeah, no, you don't need that made in the motion, I'm just telling you it's a typo, and we'll correct that. Okay.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to pass, and it's 2014-14 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any groin discussion from the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
Oh, I've seen it spelled both ways, but the city attorney's-
And I've spelled it both ways, too, so-
You're right, it's spelled with a Y and not like-
I always take my attorney's advice.
Exactly.
That's because she's your wife.
Yeah. No, I meant the city one.
There you go.
All right.
Nicely done.
Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. And I know our guests have not made it this evening, and I'm going to ask the commission at this time, I will not be here for the November regular meeting, I will be actually in Michigan, and if, if it pleases the commission, I would ask if we could wait till December to reschedule that, because I would really like to be here, there, it's a great group of people and what they've done for the city, so, if we could hold off, Mr. Crawford, and if it pleases the commission, we'll wait until December to-
We already have another one scheduled for November, so I would think that we shouldn't double up December, makes more sense.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. And at this time, is there any reports or correspondence from any of the commissioners? Well, the only thing I'd like to report is, we've just received word from the CBB that as far as the collection of vet tax dollars, we have already hit 2013 numbers, and we have two months to go, so, I think last year, we hit 31 million, I think we're well on our way for hitting 32. Uh, the good thing about that is, the discussion is continuing on with the members of the TDC, there's a lot of people that are wanting to see more, I'm going to call it curb appeal, out here on the beaches, so the good thing is, is the direction of more money coming from vet tax dollars, or beautification of Gulf Boulevard is, I believe, is on its way, so I think that's, uh, good for us, as we're seeing more areas to be able to plant some palm trees and undergrounding utilities. So that's the good word from tourism.
Good job.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, any good news from the legal world?
Yeah, I've got two things I wanted to just remind you of. The first thing is, is that I think that you saw an email from me a couple of weeks ago relative to a continuing education requirement that you have as commissioners, and, um, that email was just to remind you that the Florida Legislature decided that it was important for city commissioners to have four hours of ethics training every year, and so, as of January the 1st, you'll be required to do that, you have the entire 2015 year to do that. Uh, the Florida League of Cities is already trying to establish different meetings throughout the state, in addition to that, they're trying to create a program where you can actually do your continuing education online. Um, as we know, a little bit more information on that, we'll let you know, but keep in mind that you're going to have to, to do that in 2015. The other thing I wanted to tell you is, is that there's been a lot of discussion about medical miracle, medical marijuana, and adopting a ordinance provision in the city to address the situation if, if someone was to come to the city for dispensary to sell medical marijuana, that you may want to regulate that and put it in a particular zoning category. Um, and so I think that in the next month or two, we'll probably talk to you a little bit more about that, I'm not sure if we want to add it to the next workshop meeting, but